Special meeting in the Board of Library Trustees on Monday, September 26.
We're recording and I'm gonna go Blanche.
We're not in the exact session today, correct?
We're good.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, and Blanche will do minutes from the recording.
Okay.
Secretary.
You can just call it all.
But you don't.
Yes.
You have to.
No, but I'll make notes.
Oh, who's here?
Yes.
Yep. But if you still want to call.
Okay. Gonzalez here. Novick.
Yes.
Albers.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Gray here. Absent. Kelmag and Burr.
We're saying a pledge allegiance tonight.
We are. Yes, we are. I'm sorry, Tom.
That's okay. A pledge allegiance to the.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if that locked, Mark. I think it was open, but just in case. Yeah. I thought we had.
No, there's no executive session, has there? So, we're open door policy, right?
The budget actually can't be as an executive. It would only be if it would be discussion of purchase or lease of real estate.
You can do budget under executive. It has to do with any type of negotiations.
Right, but it's specific pieces of your budget. But is this the general.
Anyhow, there's no secrets.
It's usually better to do it open if you can. Your notes were very thorough. Thank you.
I commend you. Your presentation.
Thank you. I did not read. No, I wanted, you didn't have to, but I wanted to have it just in case.
Can you just tell me you read the entire employee handbook?
I did read the entire.
Well, I'm a failure then, because I was only skilled at.
So, I don't know how you want to go about doing this.
Neither.
Okay. You do have my notes, my spreadsheet, which I think, and as I said, I tried to be very thorough with my notes, so you understood my reasoning behind the recommendations that I did make and hopefully answered any other questions that may come up that you might have had or, you know, may come up as we talk about different scenarios. And that's what I actually have this set up for, is that this is my actual spreadsheet and I have all my formulas figured, so over the course of our discussion, if we want to see what it looks like to plug in different numbers, we can do that. So, I, as my first note said, I mean, overall, I'm recommending to the board, my recommendation's based on a couple of different things, mostly having to do with the big ticket items that we're gonna have to be responsible for next year. The payment off of the loan is a big one, that's over a hundred thousand dollars. The new generator, which will be about fifty thousand dollars. The increased cost to retirement, which we have no choice over, and then, what else is there? Any construction, any other building improvements that we may want to make.
In the children's section.
In the use, yeah. Those would be primarily in the use services section. We've been working with someone to give us some ideas about cost breakdowns and what different things would cost us. What we're looking at right now, if not next year, but at least within the next couple of years in the Use Services Department, would be addressing the ceiling and the lighting issue. That is, I did not, my apologies, I did not bring our facilities audit that we had done, but the lighting was, in the Use Services Department, was one of the things that they had listed as a priority for us, in addition to those couple of other things, like the generator, and I think there was one other thing that they said within the next couple of years we probably should address. So, lighting would be an issue there, and then also, we've been looking at trying to replace the shelving, particularly the wooden shelving that holds the nonfiction books. Those shelves are over, probably over fifty years old. They were actually built by prison labor, which is a little interesting to admit, but if you have not had the opportunity, I would say, to do this gingerly, they're not very stable, and we've tried to, you know, stabilize them as much as possible, but they really are somewhat unsafe, and so that's a concern of ours. So, those are two of the big things in Use Services that we'd like to address. If not somewhat next year, 2017, you know, I want to plan for that in the future. So, those are some big ticket items that, you know, we're looking to address next year. Also, on my spreadsheet, I did put in the blue text, those are lines that either, they're already, they're dictated that we have to pay by law, such as retirement, I'm just gonna, you know, throw that one out there, but then also lines that have very little wiggle room. So, you know, if we look at things like, you know, health insurance, that's dictated by the number of employees we have that are eligible for that. Things like periodicals, that's a pretty straight fee. If we do any, you know, any adjustment to that line down, whereas we would have to eliminate magazines, that kind of thing. Things like photocopiers, that's a contractual arrangement that we have, we don't really have any room with that unless we start getting rid of copy machines, for example. And things like the databases, again, any elimination or any reduction in those budget lines would require us to actually eliminate a program or service. So, so as I looked at, you know, the budget scenarios, you know, my first, I first tried to, and I think those four months I were here when I was here for the first time, I tried really hard, you know, as I approached things, my, my general sentiment as a director is that I have to be able to defend it if I have a taxpayer standing in front of me. I have to be able to defend a service, a program, a cost, something that I've done. So, I always try to look at, you know, our current, our current income lines, and, you know, what did we request last year? And is it possible for me to stay flat? Can we keep that flat? And I did try to do that, or I showed you what it would look like if we did that. Because of the other things, those kind of four big ticket items that we need to address next year, I, I think that keeping the levy flat would result in reduction in services and programs and our collections. And I would be really loathe to do that, though, of course, should the board decide that's what they want to do, certainly we will, we will, you know, work at making that, or, you know, the staff and I will make sure that that happens and we'll make it work as best we can. The 2% increase in the levy, if you look at, when I say the levy, basically the levy is the, is the amount that we're asking the village to levy for us. So, that is just that top line, that's what we get in property taxes. All the other revenue lines are things that are, you know, fines and fees, you know, book sale receipts, grants, those kinds of things. Did you have a question, Mark?
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
But why don't you finish with your things?
No, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, so, you know, when I talk about the levy increase, what I'm looking at is just that, that increase in the line that we ask the budget to levy, we ask the village to levy for us. So, that's always gonna be that, when I, when I do the 2% increase, that's always, or the two or three or whatever percent increase, it's that top line. So, and then all of those other revenue lines pretty much stay the same. And all of the revenue sign, outlines, excuse me, I kept those the same as last year, 'cause I think those are fairly close estimations. You know, as I said in my explanation, as we get more money, as we get more money, as we get further into the year, approaching end of the year, you know, once we have actual dollars, I'll be able to make some much better estimates about, estimates about the amount of money that those lines bring in. The one line that did change is the per capita grant line. I actually, I am optimistic that the state will continue to at least give us what they gave us this year, always with the caveat that that could change, but we certainly know that's a decrease of, you know, it's about half, well, a little bit, it's under half or a little bit more than half, but it's, you know, it's a significant decrease from the per capita line of previous years. But, like I said, all the other revenue lines are staying the same. The only thing that I've changed is the levy request. So, again, I think things were fairly self-explanatory. I tried to be as thorough, yet not overly wordy in my explanations, so I'm certainly willing to answer questions. As I said, we can plug in different numbers, however, however the board wants to proceed.
What's in green, is that what you?
It's just the, that's my recommended.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I just highlighted that, that was my, that was my, that's my initial recommendation to the board, and that, that reflects a 3% increase in the levy, which is an additional ninety, what do you think?
Six thousand.
Ninety-six thousand dollars approximately over last year, and that reflects all of the expenses that I would anticipate with that 3% increase.
And this is what you will present to the village?
No, this is what we would present for the village if we wanted to.
So, this is a draft right now. And so, whatever the board decides is the final thing. So, the board may decide that they want to do some combination of 2%, 3%, whatever, or they might, you know, we can go through this line by line and we can plug in numbers and do whatever, so.
We asked the village to tell the Cook County tax collector to bring a certain amount of tax money to us. Last year, it was three hundred and twenty, three million, two hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Right.
And Pam is requesting that we ask that number. This year, it'll be 3.3 million.
Right.
So, roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
And we got that thirty-two million.
Three point two, yes.
So, and actually, if you look, as of right now, we've actually received a little bit over, so in that 2016 estimated column, that 3.215, 368 million, that is an actual number. So, that is actually what we have received from property taxes this year. So, we actually got a little bit more.
So, this is maybe the real actual?
The estimate, the estimate for the revenues, the only thing that's actual so far on the estimated revenues or the expenses is that first property, the property tax numbers, the first two, basically. Because we get notified every time tax money goes into our bank account. So, I know those two numbers, but that's the only thing I know for sure.
Okay.
At this point. And that could continue to go up, though we probably won't get additional tax money at this time unless it's late payments, and we do get the trickle of those towards the end.
So, if somebody goes bankrupt and a property sits there empty, the tax was still levied on the property, but it was never paid.
Correct.
So, the property sells, the tax gets paid, we could be getting money from two years ago.
Or somebody just pays their taxes late. Right, and then we get a certain. Right, that kind of.
So, that's how the number varies.
But, so for right now, though, in that estimated column, the only two numbers that I do know exact as of this printing were those chalked to.
Okay.
So, but in terms of what we present to the village, the village doesn't need this much detail. And basically, so they'll look for some kind of big, big expenses. So, if you'll notice, I've got it broken down into, you know, personnel subtotal, main materials and services subtotal, operations subtotal. A lot of times, the village will just want to see the numbers for those, and then your final levy request number. Because when, if you ever look at, like, the village's audited financials, the library's just a separate page, and you'll, so you'll see the library, and then they'll have a few of those categories broken out like that. So, for what the village needs, I mean.
They need a number.
They need a number, pretty much. There's, you know, kind of, we write a letter and we do some other things, and they might want me to do a presentation to the board this year and stuff, but.
Pardon?
They even asked that, but they haven't given me a date, so until I, you know, and I'm fine with that, but, but basically, as Mark said, they just need a number, because it's just as far as their finances are concerned, while we're related to them and we're part of.
What, what do they charge us every month that we pay, we're paying the village money?
We pay the village money for I R F. We pay the village money for some utilities, I think.
Water.
Water, I think, or sewer.
Oh, yes.
But we actually, the way that village libraries work, we're actually under the auspices of the village. We're not, we're not a department, so we're kind of in between like a district and a department, where we're autonomous and that this board can set.
So, hike over.
Right, so, so for example, you, as this board, can say, you know what, we're gonna levy 4.5. You know, we want a 4.5 increase. The village has no choice. They can't say, that's too much, we're not gonna do that. They have to do that. Most times, library boards won't do that in a village situation, because it doesn't sound nice, but, but they don't have a choice. Like, if we were a city library, they would say, we set the budget for all of the city departments, and this is what you have to do. But as a village library, we can tell them what number we want. They have to levy for that, but we have to, it has to go through them. If we were a district library, we would be our own taxing body, and then we, as a taxing body, we have to file with the county and that kind of thing, so we would be.
This is easier.
Right, it is actually a little bit easier. District, there's a lot of other legal requirements that I'm happy to let the village do, but, but, so that's kind of the connection between the village library and the village itself.
Oh, we're only three minutes ahead of.
They can't turn down what we ask.
They cannot turn down what they have. They can, if it's too high, and I know that's what happened several years ago, under one of the previous directors, is that one of the levy requests was, was high, and it did trigger what.
It was high, and the village was high, and two highs made for a bad woman.
So, it was just, I mean, the village can be unhappy, and they can share their displeasure with you, but they can't say, I mean, they can, you know, they can, you know, complain to the board president if they want, but they can't say, we don't like that number, we're not going to do it. Because this is an elected board, and you've chosen to do whatever you choose to do. Is that, I think.
It does. It does, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want, if the board decided we needed 20% more, they would have to put it through.
We just wouldn't get real, like, what a shame.
They would get a case thrown in.
I, you know, I get that, it's all.
But that's how, so, we just have to be the responsible and the most that we are.
So, I've had a bunch of questions.
Absolutely.
And these are, let me start with, I just didn't want to know where your staff and people had other questions.
That's okay.
Under the revenue, under the 2016 estimated donations.
Right.
The plan for 3,000 were somewhere around 250.
Right.
But yet, you're putting it down at 3,000, is that reasonable? I mean, it's a low number when you look at all the numbers.
Um. All things staying the same right now, it probably isn't a reasonable number. And I don't, I didn't go back and look at what 2014, 2015, what the, what the income lines were for those, what we ended up for those. Certainly, we can adjust that.
It never, yeah.
If, if the board feels that that's an unreasonable number, I mean.
Too many of these could make a problem.
Sure, exactly.
Why, I'm not concerned.
Right.
I think it's something that we should keep in mind if, if we're gonna start shopping around. The other thing, I was wondering, how did you come up with what you consider to be a flat levy?
That's, that, a flat levy is considered no increase over the previous, uh.
Right, so the eight years.
This.
Yeah, no, I know. I understand. Except for grants, but then, those two numbers are the same.
Yeah, the top one.
The budgeted one and the flat one.
Twenty sixteen.
Okay, so all of those are the same. When you get to the expenses, they're different. The flat levies and the, is there expenses, expenses going?
Yes, okay.
Assuming the new expenses.
So, the 2016 budget was the budget that was approved by the board toward the, toward the year we're in now. The 2016 estimated, those are revenues and expenses that I estimate we will spend by the end of this year. That could change dramatically. I mean, that's my best guess, based on, you know, previous month's expenditures, that kind of thing.
Building, building labs.
Right, but it won't.
Just labs.
The flat levy, the revenues are going to stay the same.
Stay the same.
The expenses are different because, because there are some expenses that I have no control over, that we have no wiggle room. We can't, we can't change them, they're either contractually or legally, we're obligated to pay those. So, in order to maintain, if you look at, so the total of your revenues for your flat levy is 3.301, 935. And then if you go and you look at the total expenses, basically, we have to balance our budget. So, I balanced that out. So, because there's certain expenditures that I know are gonna have to happen, and I know approximately how many hundreds of thousands of dollars those are going to cost me, to maintain that flat levy, to make sure I don't go over that 3.3 million, I had to make cuts. And so, the flat levy line, the flat levy column indicates where I think we could reasonably, though painfully, make those cuts in order to keep that, so that we make, so that our, our budget is balanced.
What brought the interest levels so high under the estimate? Seventeen hundred compared to eight hundred that we're doing.
I think that what we were seeing in previous years was still a holdover from when investments were really, really bad, and we have started to see an increase in those.
Okay.
So, my sense is that this seventeen hundred, that will probably be closer, will probably be closer to that than not going forward, but because I don't have a lot of years of experience with that yet, I don't want a budget for it.
Under grants for it, the seventeen, nine hundred, were these any of the grants that Deborah pulled in for the lift and other things?
That grant, I believe, has already been received, and I think that was received where she left.
I mean, some of the grants were all, were related to buildings, some of the grants were related to.
The one grant that she applied for, that is my understanding that we got, that we have not seen, was the lighting grant. And that.
And it's not surprising, because they're all fast.
Yes, so my understanding of this is that while the lighting grant came from a non-governmental organization like Common Comment, or whoever it came from, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head, obviously have my paperwork.
Suppose they got filled before.
It gets, but the grant, the, the distribution of the grants was happening through the state. And so, with everything happening with the state, it's my understanding that that money is out there somewhere, but we have not seen it, and I don't know anyone passing it. So, that's the only grant that I know of that had been applied for that we hadn't yet received.
Is it reasonable to expect to get seventeen, nine hundred again?
That one's the per capita.
That's the per capita.
That's the one that she's.
And that's the one, that's the amount that we got this year. I think that's the only number she put in. That is the only number that I put in.
Okay, okay.
Because.
My mistake.
I, if we end up getting those grant funding, that grant fund, the grant like fund, the, from the light, their money from the lighting.
The lighting.
Are there any other grants that you go after?
Um, you know, I'm always looking. They are not as prevalent as they were once before. There's also not as many that apply to libraries as, as too much anymore. You know, the, the big ones are certainly per capita, we always do that. The lighting grant, you know, that's kind of a one-time thing.
Right.
Living or construction grant, you know, we could, you know, something like that, we could, if we wanted to really say, we're gonna redo the Use Services Department now, we know it's gonna cost us 300,000 dollars to do everything we want to do, or whatever the case may be, you know, we could try for that. The problem with a lot of those grants that we've typically gone for in the past is they all are from the state. And now, with this, this, you know, budget was in state.
Well, yeah, it's a them.
Right, I mean, I, I feel fairly optimistic that we will continue to get the per capita grant in some, at some level. I'm hopeful it will be at least at this level that we got this year, which was seventy cents per head, so per capita. Previous years had been 120, 123, I think, per head, something like that. So, I feel fairly optimistic about that number. If we did get any additional grants, we always have the option, and I believe the board did this once before, or at least a couple of times before, when you're going through the renovation process, that you can amend the budget at any time. So, if all of a sudden, you know, fifty thousand dollars falls into our laps, you know, you know, then, yeah, then we would amend the budget, so that, because the thing is, is particularly with village budgets, that happens, this happens more in the district environment, we actually have to set an appropriation budget, which says, this is what the board is allowing us to legally expend. And so, if you haven't allowed for that, then you can't do it. So, you could get, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars, and, and, I mean, someone could die and leave you their whole estate, but you have to amend your budget so that you can spend it. So, and usually with the district, they set those appropriations during the budget process, but villages don't do that as much, or village libraries don't do that as much. So, certainly, if that grant funding comes available through the lighting grant, or should we get more money in the per capita grant, and we haven't allowed for expending it in the rest of the budget.
I'm sure you'll have to.
Then we would just amend the budget in that case.
Thank you. That's mine, I reckon, if anybody else has questions.
Does anyone else have any questions about the revenue? And I did make a note about revisiting the donations.
It's very minor, but.
No.
Reality is, we're not getting the donations, and I don't see the foundation as standing.
Well, you know, I mean, I've, I've, I've been talking to Brento Ross about the foundation, and I have some ideas about that. I, at this point, want to get through this process this year, get our budget set for next year, and then start to look at some of those potential, some of those things that we could potentially do, maybe on a smaller scale, so not something quite as elaborate as the, as the craft beer tasting that we did, even though that was a wonderful event, and maybe we could do something similar if we wanted to do that.
They all said the craft wine.
But, but I think you have mentioned the wine tasting, which I think would be an awesome way to raise some funds and kind of raise our, our profile, if you will. But there's a number of things also that I think that we could do as a foundation that aren't quite so labor-intensive, maybe. So, but, you know, I want to kind of focus on getting through this, and then we can start looking at the foundation again. So, my hope is that we will potentially see some money from the foundation, but I think, as I said in my notes, we don't have anything actively planned right now, so I wanted to be really conservative in terms of that as a revenue source. That's not to say that we can't turn around and really turn it into something, so.
Okay. I'm thinking, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we might have a wide card in this, not that I'm hoping for, but this area here just underwent a triennial reassessment.
Okay.
Anybody's reassessment go down?
My, one kid gave up on college. He had to.
So, all homes in this area will reassess. My home was reassessed about sixteen percent higher.
Yeah, my house is worth a hundred thousand dollars more on paper.
Mine on paper was worth thirty-five thousand more. Now, they're gonna say, well, we're changing the multiplier, which they will, but in the end, your taxes are going up. They never go down, not with none of the.
Can they go up?
So, I'm not quite sure how our, your, your library plugs in for that, but I'm sure whatever multiplier we are at at the library plugs in on the higher assessments. I'm thinking, and I could be all wet, but I couldn't see.
Um, I, I would have to look at, I don't have quite as easy access to some of the, the information I have.
I didn't expect you to have, just throwing this wild.
No, and I think, I, I understand completely what you're saying, 'cause even, what often happens, even if we said, and that's where the, the village, the kind of the village scenario is different from the district, is that, you know, when I was at a district, I actually looked at those multipliers, and I figured that out. And as a village library, we don't have access to those, and we can get them, it's not a secret, but we don't use those when figuring out our budget, because we don't know how those multipliers might change. And so, what we do is we focus on the dollars. And that's, that's all, that's the.
You get two payments per year from tax, is that correct?
Well, we get, we actually, technically, yes.
Two big.
Because, because your taxes are due two times a year, so our big payments are typically two times a year shortly after those tax payments are due.
Okay.
That being said, we do have money that trickles in throughout the year for variety for reasons. But primarily, the big ones are.
You'd see, if they were bigger, you'd see the difference maybe next September.
Sure.
So, that may end up, that may end up being a windfall for the library.
Could be, yeah.
Not a happy time for the dentures group, for the.
Yeah, and the, the problem is, is that a lot of times, what will happen, and this has happened to me a couple of times in my, my experience as a director, you know, here and other places, is we could keep the levy flat. We can say, we are not asking for one penny more, okay? But people's taxes are still going up, because their rate is going up, and we have no control.
That's right.
I don't control the rate. And actually, the village doesn't control the rate, the county does.
Yeah, no, I, I realize that.
So, so that's, you know, and that's why, it, but, so people get upset, because they're like, well, but my taxes still went up.
Yeah, you raised my taxes.
Right, and it's like, no, I really didn't, it's just the rate went up because your size value went up, and, you know, different things like that. So, it's very, and the thing is about this, is that this local taxing is really, really complex, and unfortunately, a lot of people don't understand that, and they, they don't understand all the components that go into that. And not that they don't understand it, I mean, I, you know, I, my tax bill's high too, I mean, I don't want to.
They desire to be in history.
But it's, you get, you get, you know, you get focused on, you know, they hear one thing, we're saying, oh, we're not raising your taxes if we're keeping the lev, the, the rate flat, what we're at, or not the rate, but the dollar amount flat that we're looking, that we're asking for, but their rate will still be going up. They've done their assessment.
It's made up.
Yeah, it is, it's extraordinarily complex, unfortunately, 'cause I think.
It's made up.
Yeah. But I, you know, I mean, your point is well taken.
Yeah, I said that, I mean, you can't, you can't make a budget with that in mind, you just have to see what.
Have to know that, you know, there's that potential out there that.
Nobody wants our taxes to go up, and if you're on another rent, and you're on receiving, then you know, okay, my budget will release you.
You know, I mean, I work very hard, and I think the staff does as well, I mean, you know, as I said, I, you know, I'm, my goal here isn't to, you know, bring every penny out of people as I possibly can. I mean, I wanna continue to provide the level of services that we do, which are awesome, you know, the most cost-efficient way possible. And, you know, I mean, that's, you know, we, I'm nice over this, the department managers and I, and I spend a lot of time looking at all the different various scenarios, and, and trying to spell them out to you, and trying to work through what the potential implications are for each of those things.
We're reporting very well.
Thank you. So, that, that was about revenue, so does anyone else have any other questions about the revenue?
Yeah, I will at some point.
Okay.
So, re, when I look at revenue, I just don't look at revenue as tax. So, I know traditionally, we don't charge for many things.
Mm-hmm.
Surrounding libraries charge for videos. So, you know, they're starting to get into that space. We don't, is there alternative? I, I would also, there's tax, and then there's alternative revenue.
One of the things that all the other candidates had mentioned was passport services. Yeah, I'm really interested in that. Okay. So, a lot of libraries are, are, I, I didn't say a lot of libraries, but a fair number of libraries have started to be passport. There's a name, whatever. Passport, whatever, so, but basically, they will, um, process your passport.
And go to the office, does it need four feet?
But four feet, and so.
Which part of it would I go paying people?
Part of it offsets staff, because there's some increased staff and, um, you know, time involved with that. But it has turned into quite a revenue stream for the libraries that have done it, and I'm very, very interested in that. I think the other thing that we started, well, we have started to do this, that we're not seeing reflected in previous years' budget, and I didn't reflect really in this, just because we haven't seen how this is gonna play out yet, is that we're now charging for meeting reviews for outside, you know, for groups outside the library. So that could potentially, um, bring in some revenue for us as well. But certainly, I think there's some other things that we can look at.
Yes, there's a bunch outside reviews for these.
Um, you know, there's some.
'Cause I know we pushed it about a year ago.
Yeah, I think there's some, I think people are still kind of getting used to the fact that, that the rooms are available. And, um, and then for a long time with the, you know, with the upstairs room and computer room, and then this room was still on, open up to the public and stuff like that. So really, the only room we had available for people to rent was the master room, and that was too much for some people. So I think, um, you know, as we go.
But you only need to rent if you're not a cardholder, right?
We charge, um, groups, basically, anyone that's not, that, anything that's not a library program, we charge. There, I think there's a sliding scale, depending on, um, on what you do, on, on your organization.
Some of it refunded, though?
It's possible. It's possible.
Some of it was just like a deposit, it could be, there was a.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of it, I think, was refunded, but not all of it.
Okay.
So, um, but that hasn't really, it's, that's not reflected in here, because we haven't been doing it for very long.
Yes, it was last year.
Yes, you did. So, um, so we haven't seen a lot of that yet, but certainly, that's also something that we haven't really had the opportunity to promote overly much. I mean, we might even, and, and that was before, if you started, it was before.
You know, one very easy way to promote is just call Matt Max and put it in a newsletter.
Sure, that's a great idea, obviously. Yeah, and I think, the other thing too, is I had, um, I know I mentioned to the board, I, that the village and, um, the Park District, and I, we kind of had our first intergovernmental council meeting the other day, and that was really useful. But I think one of the good things that will come out of that is that, you know, a couple of the people said, like, I hadn't been in the library, I didn't know you did this, and so, I mean, just that kind of thing, so getting other organizations in town to know that we've got this space and it's available.
We tried a reception, but it didn't pay much people. Remember the business reception?
So I think that, Mark, giving back to your question about, you know, other forms of revenue, I think there's some things that we could look at. What I'm, as a director, and just kind of on principle, I loathe to start charging for the use of our materials. I will say that charging for things like DVDs and that kind of thing, that typically, that's something that, um, if libraries started doing that, they should've started doing it when we first started offering that service. And then over time, more libraries have stopped doing that, as opposed to started doing that. So I would be a little bit loathe to do, to do that, but I'm certainly interested in doing some other things, you know, looking into passport services, looking into, you know, marketing or meeting rooms to outside groups to increase revenue in terms of that. You know, maybe having book sales a couple times a year, you know, let's do some different things with the foundation, or, you know, doing that kind of thing. But I think that any time that we can think about, you know, and I know that somebody that's come up, you know, as we talked about before during my interview and other times, you know, looking for sponsorships of different things throughout the library. Um, you know, MB Financial has approached me, when we were going through the interminable signature card signings and everything, and all the different times that I met with the Bay. You know, they, they like to work very closely with their local organizations, and so they wanna do some kind, some kind of collaboration with youth services, and so they wanna give us a big prize for summer reading, and I'm trying to get them to maybe do the, you know, new youth services show, being funded by MB Financial kind of thing. So I think if we can work on some of those partnerships as well, that might help offset some of those costs.
Have you thought about working with the Chamber to bring them in?
Sure.
And then walk them through and save you opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, and I know that, I think, um, you know, I've talked to Mark Max a couple of different times about some things, and, um, you know, he's interested in, in working more collaboratively as well. And so, I, and I know that, I think, Mark, you and I had talked about trying to have, you know, maybe an open house here for the Chamber or whatever, just to say, hey, maybe you haven't been in here since the renovation or whatever, but look at all the great things we have.
Just saying, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, certainly, those are all things that we can do. Yeah, yeah, I mean, even just to offset, I mean, that's the thing, it's like, you know, we talk about the three thousand dollars might seem minor, but those things do start to add up. And if we can only get, you know, let's say, it can only give us, you know, fifteen hundred dollars or whatever, but that's fifteen hundred dollars then that I don't have to find, or I can use, you know, in my budget, or I can use that somewhere else. So, I know, Mark, you said, did you have other questions?
I was trying to figure out this, what is in the green column, the three percent increase in the salary? I know you have changed the salary system, so that doesn't affect me at all. You know, it doesn't bother me.
Okay.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I was wondering where, what this is a multiple of.
The, what line number is this?
I'm, I'm looking at forty ten and forty twenty, forty thirty is eliminated.
Right, going, going forward.
Uh, the green column has figures seventy, seven hundred and ten thousand, seven fifty-two, nine oh eight, oh, oh, seven five.
Right.
What are those, what are those from? Is that three percent over?
Yes, so basically, what those numbers reflect is, um.
If I were to multiply seven oh eight thousand, which is what you got as a flat.
It's probably not exact.
Of three percent?
Right.
Did, is this, you're recommending a two percent base increase for staff with three levels of merit possible?
Right, right. So this, the seven-ten, and then nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, um, basically would be if everyone across the board kind of got three percent. That wouldn't happen, because I wanna have some component of merit put into that, 'cause I'm a very strong opponent of, of merit increases. Um, and also, not everyone, um, there are some, some positions that will get a little bit more than that because of the changes that are required through, the changes in FLSA.
When I multiply three percent times seven, seven hundred and eight thousand, I get, that's a, a ten, but I get seventy-two, twenty-nine thousand, which is quite a bit higher.
Right, so, so these aren't gonna be exact, because I didn't actually figure my three percent increase, particularly off of, um, the salaries, off of this flat levy increase, okay? So I, basically, what I did was, and I can show you my, my staffing things, if you wanna see that, but basically, what I did is I looked at, um, my current levels of staffing, expected expenditures out of that, those budget lines, um, factored in any changes that we were having to make due to the FLSA, or changes that we've made due to retirements, for example, Kevin's retirement, I'm not replacing that, we replaced it with an administrator. Um, Colleen's unfortunate passing, we're not replacing her with a full-time librarian, we're gonna be replacing her with two part-time librarians, those kinds of things. So I factored in some of those potential changes, um, on the old way that we did it, and then, um, kind of added all those things together, and, and I, and figured overall, uh, you know, kind of the three percent increase. So it's the seven oh eight and the eight eighty, those are numbers that came more from if I kept, if, if the board chose to keep the, the levy flat. If you said, you know, we really aren't comfortable with raising, and raising the, the line, we know this is gonna be painful, but we want you to keep it flat. The seven oh eight and the eight eighty are my best, um, my best estimates for what I think we could, um, what those numbers would be, keeping everyone.
There's not been an eighteen thousand difference.
Right, yeah, so it's not gonna be exact, it's not gonna be exact, because different positions.
It's just eighteen thousand dollars, I'd be a number to me.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be.
Not Kevin, though, I imagine.
Well, that's true, Kevin took care of all that.
Yeah, I mean, quite, Kevin, so Kevin retiring and not replacing someone at that level, I'm saving forty thousand dollars right on that. So, just on that, that alone. I mean, just even hiring Ron, just, just, just given the amount, you know, Kevin had been here a long time, he had a different position, you know, that kind of thing. So, so this is not an exact, you're not gonna see a one, kind of one, a correlation, you will see a correlation, but it's not gonna be an exact correlation, because this number is also, that seven oh eight number and the eight eighty number, those are gonna be based on how low I think I can keep those salary lines if I have to stay within that flat levy number.
Well, forty ten, forty twenty, and forty thirty, the 2016 budget is one point six one three.
Right.
So, you've got, if it was a three percent, we're one point six one eight.
I think it's an increase of about five thousand dollars total. And, and I actually anticipate that in reality, that twenty, even if we went with the three percent, you know, that two percent base with, you know, three levels of merit up to three percent, um, we would still come under 2016 or at 2016, just because of, you know, right now, we have a team position open. We haven't filled the two part-time positions for Colleen yet, that kind of thing. Just, you know, the, the kind of ebb and flow of, of, of people coming and going in salaries, nothing, you know, this, this is always, you know, while this is my best estimate, in some ways, the budget is, is, is guesswork.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a component of that, that is.
Yeah, many of the budgets, yes, it's one big guess.
But I do think that even, um, you know, some of the retirements and changes, unfortunate changes in personnel, has also given us an opportunity to look at staffing levels, and look at how we're, we're staffing different things. And also, the changes in FLSA has also meant I had to look at those things as well. So I think that, um, you know, I feel really, really confident that even, um, you know, if we were one hundred percent fully staffed for the full year, this is about what we've come up to. And if I could say that's only five thousand dollars, then this, then what was budgeted for this year, I feel like we're doing pretty good. Because, you know, our, our staff is awesome, and our staff is what really, truly makes the library great. So, I'm, I'm, I'm loathe to, it's nice to be able to, um, let them know we appreciate what they're doing in that way.
I'm, I'm inclined to take it down to zero.
Right, um, we've typically, I know in the past, kept it at zero, and I know last year, um, there was money put in there because of Mohammed.
Oh, okay.
So that was, uh, one of the main former maintenance people. But typically, we, we don't put money in there, um, you know, we, we can, I can, if you want me to.
No, I just.
We don't usually in a.
If that's the usual, I'm comfortable with it.
How strongly do you feel about that health insurance number staying there?
Um, in terms of what?
Two two five, I mean, down from two seventy.
Oh, I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with that, because actually, this estimate that I've given you is actually, I think, a little bit high. So, if you look, um, and even my, my 2016 estimate, the two twenty, I think we'll probably be closer to two fifteen at the end of the year. And, um, so, and basically, health insurance is, is totally ineligible employees, and how much the library pays per month. So that's a pretty standard number.
We draft because it was a change of policies?
Yeah, well, I think the lib, the staff were paying a little bit more than they had in the past, um, and so that made a slight difference. And I do know from Deborah's notes from, um, for preparation of the 2016 budget, she had bumped that number up. And did not, and, and I think even in her notes, or at least in her draft notes that she gave to me, was that she didn't think she was probably gonna get that, but she wanted to be really safe because of something. So I do feel pretty confident about that number.
Okay. I have nothing else on my personal, if anybody else has.